The invocation, please, sir.
Thank you. Let us pray together, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given us here in southwest Florida. We ask you, God, that you would give us your guidance and your wisdom today, and we're thankful for your blessings, and let it be a good day for all of us. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Well, our resident veteran, Mr. Gambrell, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I... Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Racchio.
Here.
Board Member Galloway.
Here.
Board Member Win.
Present.
Board Member Gambrell.
Here.
Board Member Herschinson.
Here.
Board Member Benson.
Here.
Board Member Waterhouse.
Present.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November fifteenth. This was last year. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes approved. Okay. As we usually do, we will defer public comment until after the presentations of both sides. If there are people here going to testify, ask Mr. Rooney to please deliver the oath.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Okay. The next item of business is the Oakland Commercial Plan Development, a request to amend zoning ordinance sixteen dash oh seven for the Oakland Commercial Plan Development with the addition of a master concept plan and amended conditions. We will hear from the applicant. Or we hear from the city first?
You will hear from the applicant. I'll just give a brief introduction.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Mary Sizo. This request is to amend the existing zoning ordinance. Throughout this process, the master concept plan duration of rights also expired, so this is with the adoption of a new master concept plan. The staff does recommend approval, subject to the several pages of conditions you've seen in the staff report, and the applicant does agree with those conditions. So I'll go ahead and let them continue.
Wonderful. Gee whiz. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Ellis Hewitt with Banks Engineering, representing the applicant. I'm a certified planner and director of planning at Banks Engineering. Thank you. Thank you. With me this morning, we also have the applicant, Stan Stouter, and also the engineer of record, Brent Addison, with Banks Engineering, and the landscape architect, Jared Prentice. He's just running a few minutes behind, but he will be here for questions momentarily. The project location is approximately 2.15 acres on the west side of Oakland Drive, north of Benita Beach Road southeast. It's in the northwest quadrant of the I-75 interchange, and it is set back approximately 580 feet north of Benita Beach Road. It is tucked behind an existing hotel, gas stations, and fast food uses, and it's also adjacent to the flea market and older mobile home sites. The property remains vacant, although it received commercial zoning since 1997. Oakland Drive does serve approximately 40 other property owners and also the city's Carpenter Lane Park. The applicant is in agreement with the conditions of approval, and I'd like to adopt the staff report and attachments as part of my testimony this morning. The future land use for the property is interchange commercial, and the zoning of the site is the commercial plan development. On the exhibit in front of you, you can see the Benita Beach overlay is demonstrated by the green line, which actually stops at the north property line. There are, to the north and to the east, we do have existing mobile homes. I just would like to take a moment to point out that two of the immediately adjacent properties did provide letters of support that are attached to the staff report, and they're located in two of the property owners and the mobile homes in this location, as well as the mobile home park across the street to the east, and none of the immediate property owners have objected. The site was rezoned to CPD by Lee County in 1997, and was also included, the hotel parcel, to the south. In the 2004-2005 hurricane season, there was an unpermitted limestone staging and storing of utility vehicles on the site that was sighted in 2006. In 2009, the city of Benita Springs amended the commercial plan development with a Phase One of 47,330 square feet of open storage with a maximum height of 25 feet and a time limit of eight years. And it also had a Phase Two of 32,700 square feet of commercial office or a restaurant or a 90-room hotel. In 2016, the applicant purchased the property and requested another amendment to the zoning. At that time, the open storage use was reduced to 15 feet in height maximum, three years from the zoning approval, with the potential to request two-year extensions. Phase Two was reduced in intensity to a maximum of 25,000 square feet, and the alternate of a restaurant was reduced in height as well, or the 90-room hotel. Both of those were reduced in height at that time. And the ordinance also established a trip cap, and a condition was added that required the preservation of some heritage trees on the site. In 2018, we did go before the Tree Advisory Board, who reviewed and approved the site's heritage tree removal and mitigation plan, which resulted in three preserved trees and four 20-foot replacement trees. In 2019, the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay was adopted, and in 2021, the master concept plan did expire. These are just some aerials to demonstrate. North is to your right on this. The pavement of Oakland Drive and the sidewalk ends at the south property line right now, and the dirt road along the property is, it's dirt and it's got some potholes. The Carpenter Lane Park is up on the north here, and these are just some images showing the surrounding area. The existing master concept plan was a bubble plan of somewhat, but I did want to point out that the zoning before, for Phase One, only has one driveway proposed, and the existing zoning only required pavement to five feet above the driveway as part of the zoning approval. And at that time, the master concept plan only required 20% open space. This is the Heritage Tree Removal and Preservation Plan that was reviewed and approved by the Tree Advisory Board. The proposed master concept plan for Phase One now would include the pavement, although it would still only have the one south driveway. The applicant is now proposing to pave the entire length of Oakland, and the buffering and the sidewalk improvements would be included as well as part of any development of the site, which is in excess of what the existing conditions would require. And there, there used to be a buffer deviation along the north property line to allow the wall, the fence setback five feet from the property, but the overlay allows that fence to be on the property line now, so that deviation is no longer required. The only remaining deviation with the request is existing Deviation One, which is along the west property line, which would require a Type A buffer, which is a five-foot buffer. And this was previously approved in all the previous zoning ordinances, and it is, there's an existing drainage way that averages about 35 to 55 feet in width. And there's an existing five-foot drainage easement, and we're proposing as part of this development to give a 35-foot drainage easement over that drainage way. And the conditions would require that any exotic removal, that if any native vegetation is removed, it would be replanted. In accordance with the Land Development Code, this deviation does enhance the achievements of the objectives of the plan development, and it also preserves and promotes the general intent to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. We did hold the two required neighborhood meetings. There were six attendees at the first one, but there were no relevant project questions asked, and there were no attendees at our post-sufficiency neighborhood meeting. The open storage is appropriate at this location. It's the only historical use on this site, and it's the only interest that's been shown in the property right now. It's a previously permitted use. It's also a very low traffic generator, and the location near the interstate and setback 580 feet from the road behind existing uses. It is in the interstate zone of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay, which is the only zone that allows open storage use by request of special exception. And of course, the plan development process is a more vigorous review than the special exception review, and the staff and the applicant do agree on the conditions. Some benefits of this request. We're fortunate to have a long-term local ownership and investment that's vested on this site and will be holding it long-term. The previous timeframes for the zoning had, they didn't have a predictable timeframe as far as when people, users, could occupy the site, which prevented obtaining a lease. We've worked, staff has been great working through these conditions, and the proposed conditions will remove that barrier and allow for a predictable timeframe to secure a lease, minimum of five years from the date of occupancy. And the business strategy will allow this to fund the improvements as well as fund to facilitate the Phase Two development of the site that's desired and encourage redevelopment in this area as desired by the city. And also, it will increase safety and ultimately provide employment opportunities for the area. There's 284 linear feet of this vital extension of Oakland Drive along the property frontage with the six-foot sidewalk, landscape buffer, and will also be providing a shaded bench or other streetscape amenity along the project frontage. This will connect the high-density residential to the commercial uses to the south, and it'll also provide further connection for those attending the city's Carpenter Lane Park. And it will increase the tax base for the city. The applicant is in agreement with all the conditions of approval. I'm not going to go through them all in detail unless you have any specific questions. Let's see. And the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the interchange commercial, Policy 1.1.15. It's also consistent with the transportation element, the conservation and coastal management element, as well as the infrastructure element. The request does meet the required findings in the Land Development Code and as listed in the staff report and the backup materials. And just for respect of time, unless there's any questions, I'd like to conclude my presentation.
Do you have any idea of what kind of materials will be stored on the property? Ocean, I mean, open storage? What do you have, what do you envision?
Well, there are potential for landscape companies to have their, some of their fleet vehicles in there or pre-palitized material. No, there's a condition that wouldn't allow material unless it was pre-palitized. But there's uses of that nature. Is there anything else that you'd like to add? Oh, of course.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. For the record, I'm Stan Stouter. I'm the owner of the LLC Making Application. And over the seven years that I've owned this, 95% of all the calls have been from grounds maintenance crews that would service these gated communities that are up and down the interstate, and they have no place to go. Of course, in times of disaster like Ian and Irma, we have a lot of these recovery companies that have no places to park their vehicles. They have no places to process their employees. I do not and would not permit anything that was of an unsightly, gangly, uncoordinated nature. That's just not, that's just not the type of owner that I would have, that I am. So by and large, as Stacy had said, it is mainly grounds maintenance that service these gated communities, and they arrange from national, local, and regional companies.
I just have a follow-up to that. And that would be, and I know it's emphasized quite a few times in the background report, that this excludes anything that comes close to being toxic, I would assume. Again, just want to say that for the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you for noting that.
Have you, have you found a lessee?
I have found numerous lessies, but have been unable in compliance with the law to execute with them. The reason is, I not only have to get these zoning approvals reinstated, because I went through all this in, what, 17, 18, but then I have to go through and get a development order to make all of these enormous improvements, and I can't put any people on that property or begin to generate rent until all of those tasks have been completed. So I have a list of people that have called that want to do that, especially in light of Hurricane Ian, but in observance to the law, I have not made that happen.
And this may require you to be a little prophetic, but if you do have this open storage on a long-term lease and you decide to develop the other side for the hotel or restaurant, is that going to affect the people who may want to build a hotel or restaurant to be looking at all this other material on the other side of their property?
I would love to tell you that I have a backlog of people that want to build a hotel. I have no one that's called that wants to build a hotel.
But you still intend to do that, and you don't think that this is going to have any kind of chilling effect on that?
Just to provide some clarification, that there, the open storage use would be removed, and the Phase Two use would be on the same site. They would not coexist. It would be a Phase Two.
Well, that wasn't made clear. Now, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. In the write-up, there's A through double C list of uses that are available for this piece of property. 90% of the uses have been eliminated. So are you completely focused on open storage for this site? And eliminating all, you're comfortable with elimination of all the other opportunities presented by the current zoning?
As, thank you for pointing that out. That is one thing. We're, the very last use that's listed is referring to the listed, the list of uses allowed in the Land Development Code for the interstate zone of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. So any uses that were removed, if they're allowed in the overlay, they will be allowed on this property. So they're, they're just referenced in, by referring straight to the Land Development Code, because the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay has a schedule of uses that's already in the code that allows a plethora of uses that have been vetted and deemed appropriate for this location in the overlay, and those uses would be allowed as well on this site.
They're not, they're not, those uses aren't included in the write-ups?
No, they're in the Land Development Code.
You're comfortable, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, we are. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
The, one more, one more question.
Excuse me. I'm really sorry. Useless. Forget to shut it off. I don't know why. I hate this thing. Anyway, sorry.
That's okay. It happens to all of us.
Further questions?
Bruce?
Yeah, I have one more question. Can't find it right now. Hold on. I'll have to come back to it.
You know, while we're thinking of that, there was something about limiting the amount of traffic, I guess it was. How, how can you, in fact, enforce that?
Well, there's, there's, that's an existing condition that has been carried forward since the last ordinance, and I would defer to staff somewhat on how that's, how that's enforced. But a traffic impact statement would be submitted as part of the development order for the site.
That would clarify that.
I believe so.
Correct.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
When that permanent use comes in, or any use for that matter, they'll have to submit the traffic impact statement, and at that time, we'll see if the trips match up with the trip cap.
I found it.
Now we found it.
Yes.
Maybe this is a question for, for the city. Condition 5D eliminates the requirement for compliance with the Conservation/Coastal Management Comprehensive Plan policy. A drainage analysis is not required. That drainage analysis would show, would have to show that there was no impact on adjacent properties, and they're excused from lighting requirements, signage requirements, and pickup/disposal of solid waste and recycle standards. Is that...
Bruce, where are you? What page are you on?
Those are found on page nine, 10, and 12. Environment, there you go. Thanks.
What we tried to do with this request was to eliminate repetitive conditions that are already code requirements. So those are already code requirements that will be addressed at time of submittal. Therefore, it's not a specific condition in this report.
So those kind of analyses will be carried out?
Correct. They are still done in code required at time of development order submittal. Yes.
Anything else?
Are you going to make a presentation?
I can. Otherwise, if you have more questions, we can address them. Otherwise, it will touch on the same point.
Well, let's see if there's anything else for the applicant. Okay. Then we'll hear from, well, we'll hear from the city. I mean, that's, I think we should...
Do you have specific questions, or I can go through the PowerPoint up to you?
I got specific questions.
Go ahead.
So can you see this?
The master concept plan?
Yeah. This doesn't look like open storage to me. It looks like there's a building here.
So on there, it talks about a Phase One and a Phase Two. So specifically written out in the conditions are that, for a set time period, open storage is permitted on a temporary basis. But that is not the permanent use, and therefore, the master concept plan shows that Phase Two permanent use layout.
Okay. So before we get to Phase Two, which is a building, commercial, restaurant, hotel, hopefully, are we paving over anything?
Yes. So Phase One will still be required to do the paving of Oakland Drive, any accessways throughout the site, and installation of the sidewalk throughout the duration of the site.
Paving of Oakland Drive. It's not paved now?
No, not for the duration.
At all?
It stops...
It stops somewhere, right?
Five feet south of the property line.
Okay. It stops, it stops where?
Five feet south of the property line.
Okay, so we get into it a little bit. All right. So as I always am concerned, drainage.
Yes.
There is a bypass swell on the west edge of the property. That is... 35 feet wide?
Correct. There's a swell and...
So swell, so it's a ditch?
Yes.
Shallow ditch. And the deviation is to build into that ditch?
So typically, a five-foot buffer is required along the western property line. In this case, we're saying that that buffer is not required because there's that ditch right there. So therefore, they would... Exactly. So this way, they're not installing that five-foot buffer because of that great length of distance.
So what would, what would be installed in the buffer? What are we asking not to do?
Laura, can you talk about what would be in the five-foot buffer typically?
Because are you going to, are we going to be able to build into, pave over, get into the swell as it exists now?
Oh, go ahead. Okay. Sorry.
So typically, your five-foot buffer is five trees or four trees per 100 linear feet, and that's it. There's a couple of different questions I think you had in this, so...
So we're not paving up to that five-foot mark?
No, they're, they're actually going to extend the drainage easement from, I think, the five feet that it is now to 35 feet? To 35 feet. So then, so that'll protect it more even than it is now. So there's, I don't think there's going to be a change even in the elevation or anything of that, of that area, too. So, so the deviation was regarding the, because of where it is next to the flea market and the parking and the FPL there, it was just a different, little difference of what we typically would require in landscaping, because there is some vegetation along the drainage easement. So there might be some invasive vegetation removal there. So any impacts from that would replace... What, what's the...
There, there is a condition that requires if, when we do the exotic removal, if there is any, if there's any understory or native vegetation that needs to be replanted, there's a condition in there that does require that. But we are, today, there's a five-foot drainage easement that's shown on the master concept plan along the west property line, and we are, as part of the request, working with staff. We're proposing a 35-foot easement to further protect that area. We are not proposing any improvements. You'll see the drainage, this is the drainage way now, the existing five-foot drainage easement, and we're proposing a 35-foot drainage easement to provide further protections.
And that would be a wide enough area to allow for a tremendous amount of percolation, I would think. So I think that, that 35 foot, I mean, wouldn't that take care of just of any potential, you know, rain event or something along that idea?
I'll defer to the project engineer on that. Thank you.
Good morning. Brent Addison, for the record, with Banks Engineering. Yeah, so this, this swell is existing today. It's actually rather deep. It's a pretty large swell that's in there. It is vegetated. There are oak trees and other native trees in there. There are some exotic trees and plants and stuff that would be removed. But the intent is to preserve this, and this, this would be outside of any water management system for this property. So we, you know, in the, in the future, you see up in the top, we have a detention area, but everything would be treated on-site prior to discharge into this swell. So we are, you know, when we first started talking to the city about this, there was concern, because that, that swell does drain properties to the south and take that flow to the north, to the Imperial River. So we're providing this easement that would allow, would allow the city to come in and maintain it should they need to. But we're, we're not proposing any impacts to that large swell that's there.
The portion of Oakland Drive that's paved now, where does that stormwater runoff go?
There's a small swell. I don't know if there's a, is there a pointer up here? Oh, there we go. The top button. Okay, so there is an existing swell. You can kind of see it. There's kind of contours on the south side there. And so that's our understanding of where the water drains from Oakland right now and drains across and into the larger swell in the back. And so I've actually worked with Stuart and talked about this. So we're going to, we're going to keep that drainage pattern. The new road would be a closed drainage system with curb and gutter, as is required by your code, and we would be outfalling into that swell that would ultimately go to the larger swell on the west.
You said you spoke with Stuart, Stuart Smith?
Yes.
Is it? Oh, hey!
Yes, sir.
So for Phase One, are we requiring Oakland Drive and it looks to me like an island there on the east side? For Phase One, we're requiring that to be constructed?
Yes, the full length, which is different than the original approval.
To park trucks and such on the property?
Well, to get into the property, yes, and park the trucks on the property. Yes, sir.
So we're paving over, okay.
Okay.
Just curiosity, how is the, I know over the years, that area gets flooded during, you know, Ian, Irma, you know, how's that been in the last hurricane? Just curiosity. I know it tends to sheet flow, sheet runs, and tends to kind of go in that area.
I don't, I don't have any specific knowledge on, during the storms, what...
Irma, it was underwater.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I didn't look for Ian.
Yeah. Yeah.
Irma, Benita Beach Road was half underwater.
Yeah, I was just curious. All right.
Okay. Enough for... Enough for, for the applicant?
Any further questions for staff?
Has this, this, this kind of use is a very disruptive use. All open storage is disruptive. We have one on Benita Beach Road now, near the Logan Circle, where we have a bunch of dumpsters parked in there now, and, you know, scattered all over the place. This is, you know, it's in a residential area, it's right next to the hotel. It's not going to be the best view out of those hotel windows. I think, my feeling about this is if you have to hide it, and you, you have very specific barriers and, and walls that have to go up around this thing so nobody can see it, my question is, has the planning office ever spent any time trying to figure out what to do with this area? I mean, the trailers, the residential area is not in the best shape. This is not a good long-term use in this location. Have you guys thought about what to do with this place, other than just temporary holding uses?
Yes, so that is why it's part of the interstate zone of the Benita Beach Road Corridor overlay, which allows a vast amount of commercial uses to go there. But as you've seen throughout the years, no one has moved on this site to construct something like that. So we found it appropriate on a temporary basis to allow the open storage, knowing that within the next several years, the phase-two is required to be built if something is to be done there. Within that area, all of those mobile homes cannot be replaced unless by natural disaster. So specifically, if any residential tries to come in there, it would require going through a plan development, and they are all required to be consistent with the overlay. So yes, we have addressed that area, and this, the intent of this is to further the overlay's intent here. Again, it will take several years to get there, but we know that this site has been vacant for several years, and so we found the temporary use to be appropriate for the duration of time.
Thank you.
Do we have to force this LLC to pave over the road and put that island in for phase-one? Is that part of the code?
It furthers the intent of the overlay to improve the area to further development down the road.
Who's requiring it?
We are conditioning that it is required.
So the city of Benita Springs is requiring it? Not previously in a code already? You're looking ahead to phase-two?
We can be creative where the whole property does not need to be paved. However, because of the location, there are residential uses down the street. We find a sidewalk to be of the utmost importance, and for the drainage to be improved at this time. So again, if we improve this now, that will further development down the road as well, furthering the intent of the overlay.
And the applicant has agreed to that?
Stuart.
I have agreed.
Please.
Hi, Stuart Smith, Community Development. May I help you?
Have you been sworn, Stuart?
Did you swear?
Can you identify?
He swears, he swears all the time. He's just real quiet. He swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Identify yourself for me, please.
Yes, Stuart Smith. I'm Community Development Engineer for Community Development across the street.
So right now, Oakland, the paving of Oakland goes just a little bit into this property. Stormwater that is running north towards the river is going to take a left turn and go to the drainage easement and bypass swell that's on the west edge of the property.
Correct, as was outlined by the engineer for the.
So when we pave it all the way to the north edge of the property and put this island in, how's the stormwater going to take a left, going to head west on that newly paved property?
That will be a function of a design that the applicant will have to submit and get reviewed and approved by staff at development order. And as has been indicated for sure, they will not impact adjacent properties, or they won't, will not get approved.
So that, what you just said, something else is going to have to be approved further down the road, that's not in what we're looking at right there?
That, that extent of detail is not, no.
But it'll be what requires it to be submitted and approved?
The code, the code, chapter three, land development code, has checks and balances that will review and approve proper drainage during the development order.
These are questions for, for the development phase of this, not for us. We, we don't have to.
That's, that's the way I see it, yes.
It's not in our remit to even decide this right now.
Correct, and it's already been pointed out that that step needs to be taken for what we're developing.
They will be taken at the appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Anything else for the city? Anything else for the applicant? At this stage, I think I will entertain. I'm sorry?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, if any. I'm sorry. None? Okay. Good. At this, at this point, I think I will entertain a, a motion to approve the request to amend the zoning ordinance in accordance with the, the terms and conditions as outlined by the city as contained in this report.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion granted. Thank you very much. Mrs. Deborah, I will sign the minutes, and we are now adjourned.
Well, we got an update here.
Thank you. Oh, an update?
Yeah, case update.
Oh, this is something new. They sneak it in. What is this? Is this the, the, the update for the, the Dunkin' Donuts?
Burkhardt CPD special exceptions.
What, what is that, please?
That was the Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, okay.
It is, okay.
Has it even been built?
You remember that.
Not quite, but it was approved by city council, so now we are able to move on for the development.
That, that's the automatic appeal from us. No matter what we do, we're always subject to oversight by the city council.
That's true.
A fact of life. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before, before we adjourn, could I just have a moment?
Certainly.
A week from tomorrow, a person who's sitting up here is going to be retiring from the city, and I have to take a moment, because she's absolutely a sweetheart. I, I've known Debbie for so many years, and over those years, you know, she's become a close friend, not just a professional colleague, and at this point, I, I just want to take a moment. This is probably your last meeting for us, right? The zoning board. So I just want to take a moment. Debbie, thank you ever so much for your attention, your steadfastness. I mean, you are an amazing person who can switch, if someone comes in and says, oh my God, the meeting's been changed to another location. Debbie doesn't ask anything, she knows what she has to do, and she does it. I wish you the very best. I know we all do. So congratulations, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it, so.
What's the world coming to when you're going to retire at thirty-nine? No, seriously, Deborah, enjoy your retirement. You have any plans? Nothing?
Relax for a bit.
Yeah, relax.
Stay out of traffic.
You going to turn your phone off? That's what you're going to do. Turn your phone off.
And, and has your replacement been named? Not yet.
Not that I'm aware of yet.
Excellent. Again.
You set the bar high, so.
And all best wishes. I miss you.
Our next meeting is March twenty-first. We're good.
tentative.
Cases.
Well, it will be confirmed, I would imagine. Okay.
I move we adjourn.
What's that, sir?
I, okay, I move we adjourn, so. I prolong the meeting by two minutes.
All righty. About a good two minutes.
Yes.
Your affirmation here.
Yes, I couldn't let that opportunity go by.
How did you find this out? I thought it was a.